Sheriff, you got something?
Yes, sir.
You want to have a scene walk?
Y'all better be pleased. I'm going to start just having the Father of the Lord thank you for this day and thank you for the blessed life that God you bestowed upon us today, dear Lord. Lord, I just thank you for each and every one in this room and I ask a special blessing upon them and their family, dear God, this season, dear Lord. While we thank you for this season, dear God, the part of our slavery. Dear Lord, I just ask you that you go with us through this meeting, that you lead, guide, and direct us, go through this wisdom and knowledge and understanding, dear God, that we can make the right decisions to handle county business, dear Lord. Lord, I just ask you to forgive us for any sins, for last three things, and Jesus precious all today. Amen.
All right. Mr. Hagan, you got?
Yes. I want to introduce a special guest with me today. This is Jimmy Hutchinson. Jimmy's a board of aldermen at Blue Springs, and he's just been elected president of the fair board. So he's a...I've been telling him about how great a meeting we have and how well you do. So he's got his notebook and he's taking notes and making notes on how well y'all do things. So we're glad to have him. He's a retired military, so anyway, he'll meet all of y'all afterwards, even visually.
All right. Glad to have you.
Oh, I guess, talk to the public here for the planning section of County Road 276 abandoned and baked ahead of the closing.
Is anyone here that would like to speak?
Sure. Do a little bit of stuff.
We each have about five minutes.
All right. Lord, you don't like to be restricted to five minutes.
I thought you jumped into that.
That's right. Here, let me give you all a couple pin through.
Let's see, so I'm Sean Hagan. I'm the attorney for the Tippa County Board of Supervisors. And so up in Tippa County, we deal with road closures. And we like to brag that we made the law, road closures, in a case called Rose versus Tippa County. The Supreme Court told Dennis Christian, who was one of our longstanding supervisors, that he could not close a road and reopen it. He couldn't change his mind. And so we got reversed on that. So I say that to say that we've gotten really good at dealing with these issues with closing roads. So what I wanted to talk to you about today is County Road 276. I'll give you two documents real quick. So what you're seeing here is I represent the people who own the property south, so that's going to be on your map. That's going to be track number five and track number six. And so what y'all are proposing to do is to close County Road 276. Now, the way this bill played out is legislature, for 150 years, if you wanted to open or close a road, you just had to go to court. There was a bunch of law there with all of that. In 1999, the legislature decided that they wanted every county in the state to pick and decide what you claimed to be your county roads and what were not. And so every county had to adopt a county roadmap and a county road registry. And so back in those days, so the question was, is well, what happens after you adopt that? Does that mean you abandon all the roads that are left off of it? And the answer that the Supreme Court has said is no. It doesn't mean you still don't own those roads. It just means that they're not part of your map. And so what you see here is that County Road 276 is still on your roadmap. It's still a road that's on your roadmap, and up until about two years ago, there was a road sign out there. What it is not, it is not on your county road register. And the law says that if you've got a conflict between the county road register and your map, that the registry controls it. So right now, you don't have this on your registry. So today, you have essentially three options. So your option today would be to go ahead and choose to close the road and abandon the road. The second thing you could do is to simply do nothing. Or the third thing you could do is you could correct your road registry and put County Road 276 officially on the road registry. Now, y'all probably know that we're in litigation with the Harrisons. The Harrison's own track number one that's up here on the top part of the map. And so we are in litigation over the rights that the parties have to County Road 276. And one of the key factors, one of the key things that comes into that is whether or not this is and will continue to be a public road. Now, representing supervisors, I understand, and y'all already passed a resolution proposing to close the road. So let me give you some reasons why we think that it's a really bad idea to close a road and why I hope you'll reconsider that and decide to keep it open. So the first is that this property goes back 150 years. This property is called Ford Bottom, and this property was originally part of Dr. Ford's family back in the late 1800s. After he died, the property was sold to different people in his family, and it ended up being divided. As a matter of fact, one of our clients who owns track number six down here is Randy Ford, who is like the great-great-grandson of Dr. Ford, who back in the late 1800s owned this property. And so County Road 276 is his only access to this property. So when we start talking about the effect of closing a road, so the first thing I would tell you is that if you close a road, it affects the value of public property, or it affects the value of the property. That means that anytime any of the parties who get ready to buy or sell any of this property, they're not going to have a public road access to this property. So then that begs a question, well, so what rights do they have? So if you flip the page, I gave you a copy of the statute. And so if you look down there on the statute, you'll see that a resolution of the Board of Supervisors, "Abandoning Any Section of a County Road," will abrogate the easements owned or used on behalf of the general public. So what does that mean? That means that when you decide to abandon a public road, it means the public no longer has access to the road. The mistake that I think some supervisors and city officials believe is that if you abandon a county road, that somehow means that the people who own property on that road can continue to use it. And that's just not true. And that's not true here. And so the deal here is that if you go back in the deeds, there are easements that are written. So there are three kinds of easements. An express easement. An express easement means that you literally have a deed to an easement. It's a described easement. The second kind is called an implied easement. An implied easement means that you've got a piece of property where somebody sells you the back forty, and so it is implied that you can cross the front piece of property to get to the back. And you've got some of that going on here. The last is called a prescriptive easement, and that's just where you use a driveway for more than ten years with some other rules that apply, and you get the right to continue to use it after that. It's a product of adverse possession, if you understand anything about land law. The deal here is that most people in your position would believe that if we just simply choose to close this road, that everybody that uses the road now just still gets to use it. And again, that is not the law. And that's not the law here. And so what y'all are doing, if you decide to go ahead and close this road, is you are forcing the litigation to continue. And so if you chose to leave that open as a public road, it means that the litigation would continue. All it would continue is dealing with what part, what easements in my clients. And so I represent the people that own this property here. There's a handful of rand owners. Y'all probably do know this is all leased property, pin hooked, and so it's all hunting property, and so that's where a lot of the road comes in here. And so you don't have these automatic easements that are there. And then the third thing I would tell you is just like we dealt with in the LaRose case, is that you don't get to change your mind. Is that once you abandon this county road and you take your vote and it's done today, you can't go back later on and say, well, we've changed our mind, we want to reopen this as a public road. You have to start over. You have to condemn the road, just like you're going to build a brand-new highway. And so the effect of closing this road is far more reaching than you think. You may look at this and say, well, if we abandon this road, all these people can still use it. It just means the public won't be able to go out there. And again, that is not the law. That's not the way that this would end up working out. And I can get into the facts if you want. If you've got questions, I'd be glad to answer those. But there's several, lots of deeds and lots of transactions that wade into the weeds of the lawsuit, where you get into arguments over who owns the road, who owns the north half of the road, who owns the south half of the road, how much of the road they own, and everything that goes with that. But what I'm asking you to do today is to just simply amend your county road registry and just put County Road 276 back officially on the road registry, and so that these people can continue to use this road as a public road. Specifically, Randy Ford down here at the end, if you close this road, he is joining this lawsuit that we're involved in to prove that he has an implied easement over that road. It is not going to be automatic. And so that's the effect of closing the road, is it forces him deeper into this litigation, is the way this works out. So if you've got questions, I will be glad to answer those. I will tell you that in Tippa County, over the years, they've adopted sort of an informal rule that if anybody who owns property attached to a public road objects to the closing, and they don't close it, they just leave it open. And so I'm here on behalf of the people who own the property here and the people who own the property here. This property is owned by William Ford. He lives in Missouri. The people that we're in litigation with own track number one. Hunter Harrison is building a house right here in that little drop-down area here, if you know where that is. And so he's building a house there. Those parents who own this property, we're fine over ownership of that, but I think they're planning to build something here as well. And so you can foresee issues going forward, things like garbage trucks, school buses, all kinds of issues going forward. But the last thing I would tell you, you can close this road anytime you get ready. You don't have to do it now. You have absolutely nothing to lose, other than one load of gravel every four years to leave this road up. You have nothing to lose. If you decide to amend your roadmap, you get out of the lawsuit. If you decide to close the road, you still get out of the lawsuit. So you'll get out of the lawsuit really no matter what decision you make today, other than just if you decided enough. So if you've got questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Take one second.
All right. Did they go over my time limit?
A little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan. And I will be grateful to have you speaking, but I do represent Hunter Harrison and Larry in Barbara, Harrison's oil. And my name is Drop Bass. I'm from Fort Smith, Warren, Tupelo, Pontotac, Warren, Rayes. But I guess, it's my understanding first, that the county does not believe this is, in fact, a county road. I see nothing in land records where there was ever a right accord given. There's no due conveyance to the county. There apparently was a road sign at one point, that the county doesn't believe this is a county road, but if it is, we're here to abandon it. And really, the primary folks who actually would need access to this county road, again, Hunter Harrison's property there, the northern part of the county, and Larry in Barbara, and you guys have the map, and I'm using the same map that Mr. Hagan's has, they actually have a fee interest, so they're able to access their property. And the property to the south has road access, appears to a road there on the east side there, and I'm kind of looking, trying to even cover it, if you guys hear. Hands are taken. I'm not a litigator. I'm a real property lawyer, so I look at these easements and that kind of thing. And so I do love the law and the statute, and one of the abandonment statutes says a section, "You can abandon if it does not provide primary access to any occupied property." This road, whether it is a road or not, does not provide primary access to any occupied property. And really, that would be our position. It would provide it to our clients, but we have access. We do not need the county to maintain a road. Mr. Harrison has built a road, and he can maintain, you know, this road, his property. I don't believe that it is an expense that the county should incur to maintain a road. One, that it doesn't believe it currently owns right now, it doesn't hold a right of way or any property interest, doesn't maintain it. And there's really no use for anyone in Union County, other than our clients, to have access to their property using this road, and we don't need it. Some of the easements that Mr. Hagan was referencing, if there is, in fact, an easement, it would be to benefit Tippa County, not Union County residents, and there's access to Tippa. That's a Tippa County issue and not one that the Union County taxpayers should have to cause that they should incur. So, and I really have nothing further.
There was none. Yeah. There was none.
Our road back there, back to what he's talking about, that we can get to our property, that was just a timber road that come in there, and we bought it property. We took a dose and connected it to it. We do not have an easement to get in there. And the guys that's not in the club, they can't get in there. They would be violating if they come across that road. The way we had to get into our road is two, I mean, our land was 276. We have 187 acres back there, and there've been gates, 100 of them, putting gates up there since they bought it, so we couldn't get back there to our land. And we leased the land from Randy Ford, and we can't get in there. But they went and got gates up, plus they have put a ditch across the road down there at the end of their property. And I don't even know if Randy is even aware of it. And of course, the county has kept that road up, gosh, all these years. They've kept it graded, kept it drenched, gravel on it, everything. We've owned that land for, gosh, I don't know how many years it's been now, but we own the other block of land up there outside of Blackwell.
They've owned it since '94.
'94.
Which property are you speaking of that they've owned since '94? That track number five? Because there's no road access.
He kept coming down there, killing the Jews down there. That was a few weeks.
And I'm just asking out of curiosity.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this issue?
They'll be glad to answer any questions y'all got about.
I don't know the rest. Get her to.
I think I voted to take it under a last minute.
Yeah, I'm going to take it under, bud.
I'm going to vote for it, bud.
Sorry.
Motion by Randy. Second to Steve, second to the third. Request approval of the title of the big winner, House. February, February 7th, 2025, for the new chair, attorney. Five to six thousand, October.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you, Al.
All in favor? Accept of resignation of Board Supervisor, elect people as President and Vice President.
Who's that?
I'm resigning.
Yes, sir.
First, please, in change.
You need to make it plain that you're not quitting.
Yeah.
Because that's what happened. He's not quitting.
I'm just resigning.
He's just resigning as Board President.
As Board President.
Yeah, I had people calling me, saying I'm quitting. And I ain't give up yet. How much of a motion do you want to give? I'll play it.
Yeah, it was a motion. And then it was a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Get some gent with one more, one final. Are y'all ready to say what we have?
I'm making a motion, we put on the oldest one as President. Hello, y'all.
I'll second that.
I'll second.
I like the motion by Chad. Second, CJ. You want me to pass?
I don't know.
So we're going to keep you at five, Sam? Is that good, y'all?
Yeah, that's good.
No, you can't vote.
No, I like you here.
So why even motion there? Do we need to get a motion and second on that?
Yes.
We don't, do we?
That's what I wanted to do.
I don't want to take any action.
You don't want to take any action?
No. That's great.
Congratulations, Randy.
Yep. All right. All because opening new bank accounts and account funds and amend the budget required for the legislation. Oh, I did. I'm sorry. I broke the others' say. Approve of an MOU for SB 2468 for local projects specified in Section 10 of the State Bill 2468 of the 2024 regular session.
Do you read the information?
Here.
Yeah, I made y'all copies of those. Yeah, one of them is $150,000 from the Ass Bill 2468 and Section 10 and subsection AH is $150,000 for the fire department equipment repaired. And the second one is $250,000 for the transfer per filling. Well, that's subsection C U, that same out of San Diego, and 2468, Section 10, subsection C U, $250,000 and the transfer building and supervisor's office. And the next one is, it's on silverware equipment. It says, it's subsection HA, this is for personal equipment, $500,000. And I guess I'm budgeting down the road equipment and other work, and it's $500,000. And the next one is going to be the SIS Union County Mississippi and Paying Costs Associated with Replacing a Bridge, that's out there on Murray Road, County Road 113, it's a $500,000 project. And I'm going to set that up as a capital project fund, and budget is that. And the other one, let's see, subsection CN, SIS Union County Mississippi and Paying Costs Associated with Resourcing County Road 115, S and CJ District 2. And it's old, I think everybody knows this old Highway 15, it's $500,000 for that. Budgeted as a special revenue for. And we probably need to wait on this. This last one is subsection CP. I didn't hear about that one. It's on Tallahatchie River Documentary, and I don't know exactly what happened on that. I talked to Representative Crete Moore, and I got a call in to Department of Finance Administration, and it's my understanding that that was supposed to go to the Tallahatchie River Authority, which our TRA is $250,000. And the way the legislation is written, it says to SIS Union County Mississippi, some paying costs associated with Tallahatchie River Documentary. So I think we need to wait on that one until I can get some information on that. I talked to the state auditor and the office, and they said that you either need to do it, or they're done with it. In other words, you'd need to get the legislation needed corrected, and so the money went straight to the TRA, or either you had handled the contract and everything, spending tiers of that. Yeah, they say you can't just sign an MOU and just piecemeal it and let them do, pay part of it, and you do part of it, and them have the contract. Better, they recommend that either you sign the MOU and do the whole thing.
It'd be easier for them to handle the whole thing.
If you can get them, I got to get Department of Finance to, I guess, authorize that. Now, Red Hill, we had to redo, we had to correct the legislation to pick us up here and do that, you know, in session of next year. So I guess we can prove all these and just y'all include it, and then, once I hear back from Department of Finance and get all this other resolved, and then sign that one later. So your party just need to y'all prove it, sign these other five right there.
I'm making a motion with the other five. Motion for CJ.
Say it.
Second for Randy. All in favor? Motion carries. Now, authorize opening a new bank account. The funds, annual budget required, to this lady Grant, authorized by SB 2468.
I'm making a move.
Motion Chad.
Yeah.
Second Steve. All in favor? Motion carries. I'm going to change you first. Request approval of budget comparison report for November 2024.
Yeah, budget, I thought it was, budget really good. Budget fit in, fits the map. I'm making a motion.
Motion Chad.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Approval of procedure, Department of Revenue. Order of putting the real assessment for it.
This is where we've already submitted the wrongest given. This is their approval saying, we have submitted, showing that we have submitted it and I'm packing it on board minutes. It's saying not accepted. So I have to have a motion and second for exception. They're approving.
Motion for President. Motion for Randy, say. Second CJ, all in favor? Motion carries. Request for approval to change the secondary signature toward BNA Bank, the county documents. Signed to Andrew to Delanda Collins.
The signed to another department, so that someone decides if I'm not available at the, at the end of that.
Motion. Motion for Steve.
Say it.
Second Chad. All in favor? Motion carries. Steve.
Thank you. On the first?
No. CJ. Talking about third MOU?
Thank you.
Randy.
Thank you.
Request for payment of copying personal tax rolls, real property tax rolls, home stead rolls, mobile home rolls, cert night haul to the state.
This is something that I request once a year after all the roads of this legislature that state. I was jumping there.
Motion for President. Motion by Randy. Say it. Second, Mr. Steve. All in favor? Motion carries. Circuit clerk, request for a money check, $2,950 for ECAM training, Philadelphia, Mississippi, travel registration, please take proof.
On that, Sam, the registration fee had to be up to the 23rd this month, even though they're not going, I think, into February, and we didn't roll on, said we never got approval for them to go to the ECAM training. That's why I'm asking for a money check, that's for five months to go.
I'm making a motion.
Motion Chad. Say it. Second CJ. All in favor? Motion carries. Request for election permission to plane forms two for the draft election.
I'm making a vote. Say it.
Motion to CJ. Second for Randy. All in face. Motion carries. Motion here. Approval of sergeant clerk's plan for assisting the election commissioners.
Motion.
Motion by Steve. Second. Second Chad. All in favor? Motion here. Request approval for limited edition deletion of the sheeple poll.
We have forty-four of those that were leaving, because we got the new poll works, that have, these are out, out to be obsolete, they're over ten years old.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Motion to CJ. Second for Randy. All in favor? Motion here. Corner approval of placement of speed. We got those on email?
Second.
Motion for Randy. Second to Steve. All in favor? Motion here. E nine one one, request approval of employment for JJ at Cleveland as dispatcher effective December sixteenth.
Motion to Randy.
Second. Second to CJ. All in favor? Motion here. Discuss approval of appointment for William Jeff Potts as dispatcher effective December sixteenth.
I know.
Second. Second to Steve. All in favor? Motion here. Discuss approval of this.
Okay, y'all gonna have to load up, I think.
Y'all should have a stack of a packet of yours.
Got proof of publication, we heard that on, thank the twenty twenty-seven. I remember. We also updated on December eleventh, maybe a chance part, most probably not, it's on December eleventh. And, uh, low bidder was, certainly put a thumb, John later, or fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and nine dollars, y'all found that? Then Thompson, Sheenry, the Caterpillar, they did a hundred and seventy-five thousand, three eighty-two, seventy-five cents. And, one of them was power equipment, they did a, uh, a Ratsu, a well loader, it was a hundred and seventy-six thousand, four thirty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Certainly was cheap.
Uh, that's certainly a split company, I'm like John did. I make a motion except for, hello, Ben.
Motion by Randy. Second. Steve. All in favor? Motion here. Request approval for school bus turnaround, all of those, ten on three, ten on three, new market.
It's all good.
Second to Steve. All in favor? Motion here. Request approval for paying increase for Ronald Hoden, see, five, eight thousand.
I make a motion.
Second. Randy. All in favor? Motion here. Discuss part-time appointment for Sawyer Youngblood.
I make a motion.
Motion Chad. Second. Second CJ. All in favor? Motion here. Sheriff Park, request approval for on W rates, deputy lieutenant Alex Price, effective December the sixth.
I make a motion.
Second. All in favor? Motion here. Request approval for changing of Jacob Penfield from E nine one one to Sheriff Park, effective January one.
I make a motion.
Motion Chad. Second. Second for Randy. All in favor? Motion here. Request for approval of changing Eric Caddles from full-time dispatcher to part-time dispatcher, effective January one.
I make a motion.
Motion to CJ. Second. Second to Steve. All in favor? Motion here. Request for approval of a minimum check with Jim Riddle, E D E two, three thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty cents to jail.
I make a motion.
Motion Chad. Randy. All in favor? Motion here.
It's Nate, Henry's not here.
You never came.
Little team, yeah, I don't qualify for that. She's got her surrender tag list.
I make a motion. Did you write down this?
I did.
Did you?
I did. And I made sure they all returned it. And then she has our increases and decreases that we've had in our assessment from the twenty twenty-four tax roll, due to, like, back and errors, just different changes we had to make. So, that's those that you'll have to sign. And then something that she had that wasn't on the agenda is that letter that we have to send to Mr. Geddings, and she still likes your signature and CJ's. I agree, I'm just hoping to see. I'm just starless.
I make a motion to search that surrender tag list.
I got your motion now. Second. Steve.
I may put you down.
Motion here.
I want to.
Request for approval of notice to increase in food and assistance to decrease assessment free.
I make a motion.
Motion for Randy. Second. Second Chad. All in favor?
This is a premium, you and Sam, this president, vice president, to approve, uh, seek signing this letter to me or to Mr. Geddings.
All right, we need a motion on signing the letter.
I'm saving you a letter to watch.
They're getting, all right, taxes.
Do you need to see, would you like?
Y'all wanna see it?
That's where we asked the department, they were investigating, and they said everything is okay.
Right, they agreed with us that his assessment stayed as was, that we did everything that we were required to do as the tax assessor, and that they would like for him to cease this, you know, cease the contact.
I make a motion.
Motion Chad. Second. Second on the back. Motion here.
There's two copies to sign. And I'll give them back to you, so it's a sound. Thanks.
All right. Request for approval of a minimum check for three thousand six hundred dollars to give to the Mississippi Fire, Fire Association, and volunteer fire personnel.
Motion to Randy.
Second. Second Chad. All in favor?
You sign.
Motion here. All right.
We're gonna chop stuff out anybody who can't hear. I'll get a microphone.
On the, on the request for, I don't know, partial pack, are y'all good? Just making out a minimum check, on the same thing? Is everything but adjourned? Christmas boxes, weensy? Morning?
Bad times, bad place. Early westy. I mean, it all happened years.
You didn't think any? Anybody else? All right. Motion to adjourn.